All right, it's three o'clock and we have not organized this committee for the year yet, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump, uh, we're gonna do roll call first, Ms. Sarin.
Jeff Barrett.
Here.
Chuck Ritten. Larry Clons.
Here.
Bobby Jinks.
Here.
Jason Roach. Charlie Thacker.
Here.
And Sybil Von Trent. We have four members present constituting a call.
Jason texted me earlier and said he couldn't be here and he apologized for it, but we're gonna let him slide this time. Uh, okay. Organization of the committee, we're gonna jump that one up the list a little bit. So, since we haven't organized yet this fiscal year, we need nominations for chairman of the committee.
I'll nominate Mr. Thacker. Sarah.
All right, we've got a nomination for Commissioner Thacker, second by Commissioner Barrett. Any other nominations? Do I hear a motion, nomination cease?
Mr. Chairman, I move nomination cease.
All right.
It's already related by.
Act of motion, okay. Good deal. Charlie, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, pal. Thank you, Mark, for opening the meeting up. If I finish this term out, there'll be thirty years, Mr. Chairman, of the road committee.
Wow.
But I'm enjoying every minute of it. In most cases, when I have problems with, with roads, ditch lines, whatever it may be, in years past, what I was going to do is go out and look at that situation where it may be, look at it first before I called a road committee meeting. And a lot of times, when Ben was in there and Law, a lot of times I'd just take care of it without even having a road committee meeting.
Yeah.
And that's the best way to do it if you, you know, I don't call more meetings than I have to, but we need this one to organize and also.
Right.
The road list.
Right.
That's what I would usually do in years past. But, anyway, I'll, I'll ask that we approve the minutes from our last meeting. Vice Chair. Do we have a guy out here?
Oh, you need to elect the vice chair, Charlie.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to. Any recommendations for vice chair?
Nominate Mr. Barrett. I second.
Mr. Barrett has been nominated for secretary. Have a second to that motion.
For vice, and then we need a secretary.
Then what?
He's vice chair, and then we need a secretary.
You don't got a motion, have a second. Then we take a second.
You can always push that one off on somebody who's not here.
It's Jason Roach.
Enough with them knowing, do they?
Yeah, yeah.
Another committee.
Throw it off on Jason because he, he's not here. He.
He was the secretary last.
He was secretary last time.
Yes.
Just saying.
Okay, do I hear any other nominations? Do I hear a nomination, sir?
Who nominated Jason?
Larry. I'll let you get in.
No, but I will.
Oh, I suppose.
He nominated. No, somebody was talking back there.
Oh, okay.
And who was the second? Was, did we have a second?
Need a second to the, Larry nominated, Larry wants a secretary. So, who got vice?
Jeff.
Jeff Barrett.
Jeff Barrett.
Jeff Barrett.
Yeah, I'm in vice.
Okay, so I need a second.
Yeah.
You all say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that Jeff Barrett be the vice chair. Okay. We'll, we'll nominate a, I'll ask for a nomination for secretary in case we happen to meet out on the road somewhere, and we do that occasionally.
Can we vote on that vice chair?
All in favor, vice chair. Say aye.
All right.
Uh, motion chair.
Thank you.
And that. We'll nominate a secretary in case Sarah can't be there or whatever, we have to go out and look at a problem, problem, or maybe, but normally I don't have to do that. We might have to. Do I hear a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Jason Rhodes.
Second.
Secretary.
I'll say that.
Okay, I have a motion to nominate Jason Rhodes as secretary. I have a second to that motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Yes, Sarah, minute here.
Now we're ready for the minutes, Mr. Thacker.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Number, uh, we need a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes from the September the fourth, two thousand twenty-four meeting be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Jerry. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Here, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second to that motion, from Mr. Jinks, that we approve the minutes from our last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion chair. Okay, down to number five, public comments. Anybody here with public comments? Mark, do you have anything you need to?
I'm good, Charlie.
I don't know if Danny Bennett through there or not, but when they put our water line in, they did an excellent job with our ditch lines, sold everything back to the guys. You don't even notice a mud puddle now. They did an excellent job. Danny, do you have anything?
Nope.
Bill, you're on this again.
Come up there and sit right here.
Come on up and sit there. Talk about it.
You get up there, you have to tell the truth.
That's right. We're gonna swear you in, or swear at you when you get up.
But it's simple, I love talking about this water and.
Come on up here.
Water and road.
Let me speak for you just a minute. Mr. May can call me back about November to go with you, but New Salem Road, he has a property up there, a cabin, and there's a stream of water that comes out of the mountain and comes down past his property and goes south. I have some pictures of the cabin. The county has already put in one water line for him to get to his house. He has other property behind his house, and he's, he's going to ask that you install another water line, another tile, so he has excess to his property. I've got some pictures here. The current tile, he's, he's back about two hundred yards south of New Salem Church. I'm gonna pass these around, and on the back here, we're looking about two hundred feet or more south of his cabin, where, and he's got some red stakes here, where he would probably like to have another tile put in. You know, I've got some more here.
Do you know about what size tile it would take? I mean, how much water is there usually?
Well, I believe it's a five foot.
How much?
Left line is sixty.
Well, most of them will come in twenty foot length, don't you, Danny?
I didn't measure, but it's, it's pretty good.
I mean, in diameter.
No, I think, though I didn't measure, he may know.
And what's in the quantity of the other tile that's in right now?
It's larger than one up in front of the church.
Is, is this, is this house on the right before you get to the church?
Yes, on the right, yeah.
I remember a house being there now.
Yeah, well, the old place burned down.
Okay, I remember the old place.
Okay, and I put a trailer there. Put the sun in, a lot of stuff, the garbage, pulled that trailer on up behind the doors and built one there now. And the road in front of the house used to come out across, and the creek came down from the church going south, then it went west across the road, went on down, and then crossed back, and coming in, you went through the creek up in front of the house, and then back down through the creek, and then on. And the late thirties or early forties, my grandmother did something, it should be on record somewhere, to the county, wanted to move the creek over from the house. And they would maintain that entrance from now on. And so far, they did that, but now it ain't nothing like it ought to be.
So that's your home place?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I was born in there. Eighty-five years ago, eighty-eight years.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time there. My father high-studied at church twice.
Was it?
Yeah.
Used to be a school up there.
Yeah, I knew a lot of people up in there when I was a kid.
And used to be a truck up there, rolling store. They'd go through the creek, go up in front of the house there, and my grandmother'd go out there, first thing she'd get me a can of fruit, and then buy, it's a grocery store.
Yeah.
And it ran on the town. But it's, the road to the right, when I was on the county, the road to the right, my dad was on it, when it lived up there, and I had to change the Devil's Oats Road to Macon Road because cut it off of seventy out there, that's Devil's Dog's Road, and it ends up at what's known as the divat. And then down the other, Macon Road is all, nobody lives up there now, and it ends up there at two hundred Macon Road, and you can't get into it to tree or log or something there in the driveway. And there's a spurring up there that I dug down to where the water was coming in. I put rock in there, and then I put the lead stream for, for extra heat, and piped that out, and had a good water for right in there, and probably still is. And it might be, if the county could, if you got an extra tank somewhere, to set it up there and hook it up and feed it out. Because one time, I went around and had a square or fourteen or more people there, signature and honorize them, and they paid for the hookups. And that was in late youth. And about a year later, I got your money back, and that's been hit today. So, main thing we want up there is to go to the church and go ahead. Terry has two hookups up there, and, and I'll take two. And then, oh, out of there, but that's water and, and road is the main thing. There, in front of the road, used to, in front of the house there, you could pass cars. You can't do that now, and a school bus gets over, those rocks fell in once, they could pack you back up, but if a school bus get over the rattle, it, it, when I was a wetman, this big rock, it'd probably take a lot of rattle.
They put a surge rock in it.
Sir?
Surge rock, probably keep the bank from breaking up.
Big rock. And the wife, when you get out there, just turn and go in, you can't do that, you have to come over and get over this way and go in. And it's this, oh, big crater, it's there.
Well.
If you don't stop, if I have to, I'll pay some.
Where you want that tile put in, is it two different tracks of land or going to the same property or?
It's same property. I don't know where the house is, and it goes up, and Macon Road goes up, and if I know where it is, or Chris Davis living up there, then I know where that is. It goes up to that ditch property, and there's a little creek that's crossroad, and I go to the middle of that and then come on down.
Well, we, we've never made a habit of putting, in fact, I know that in years past, made a habit of, of doing any cosmetic, where if you know a lot of people will want tile put in, in front of the yard, where you got a ditch, do them, and expect the county to put a whole, maybe a hundred, two hundred feet in it. You know, we never been getting into that. We, we furnished something for the driveways and the tier.
If you look, how much of the, of the tile that's there is rusted out back through there? You got a picture of that, Charlie?
I couldn't tell it on those pictures. The one.
Yeah, they, they saw you, the ones already in.
Yeah.
Front of your house.
But it needs to be, either that one there, needs to be, it could be four foot, whatever that is, it could be four foot, four or five foot longer, and then fix it where you can turn in like you used to.
That looks like it's thirty inch pipe right there, the one that's in there now.
Thirty inch.
Looks like it's about a thirty inch down there.
So, you are asking, my understanding, you're asking for another one to be put.
On down.
On down, south of your house.
That is different, on that, to the point down there, that would be bigger, because I would like to go in there, and I have a road going back, and goes back to the foot of Devil's Oats and circles and guns back out, and I would like, before Lord takes me to his prayer, I'd like to put an RV park back there, and that would be beneficial to the county.
So, you're asking for something on this?
That's different from the house right there, and it's a driveway going into house.
Can I ask a question?
I'm not asking for anything on that now, that's.
Which road are you wanting a new, new pipe on?
The new tile would be the first one on the line between me and Dean Williams.
Which road does it touch?
Sir?
Which road that would you be coming off of to get across the tile?
You'd be coming off of.
New Salem or maybe?
New Salem Road.
Okay. Yeah, here's his current tile.
New Salem, that's it.
I'm just trying to see if I can. And then, I'm looking south here.
The road out, it's got sort of a curve.
New Salem has twenty foot right away.
You'd be passing.
And you have sixteen foot.
Go put one in down there.
So I take foot of the right away, I got turf that I can get off.
Forget about that.
To do any back.
Put one in front of the house, enter the end of the mound.
Well, you need an extension to put on there.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, so you're asking for an extension to be put on the one that goes to your house, where you've got, to make it.
It needs your foot of that, that road.
Yeah.
Originally, it was a little bridge. So, I just had a little, little hay there, when they, and he's going to have to carry it from the road up to the barn, and I followed, and he was holding a bridge, and told him I had to put one there. And I told him I did, got a little hay here, and what was the situation? And he said, well, hold on, a few minutes, he come out there and build a bridge, and that, that day. And to take care of it, and if you go back to it, to the late thirties or the early forties, if they kept, like we saw that, that's the tale, the man is going to take your main thing, that entrance right there. And the one.
I went back for a RV park, I'm too old, I guess, to see it, but it would be good if I could get. How far, far is the, the tile that's going to your house versus the one you want, the other one you're wanting?
Well, the other one down there is secondary. The one going into the house is one, to where you go and turn in, and not go up, come out and swing, head straight in.
Yeah, so that's one that's in the picture.
Yeah, that's what he asked.
Looked like it was about a thirty inch tile.
Thirty?
Yeah, that's what it looks like in the picture. It's about a thirty.
I believe it's, I believe it's bigger than that.
I didn't know.
Could be.
It may be, but you go thirty inch, what size is next before you get to a forty?
Thirty-six. Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Well, the diameter of the thing, that's all right, or this way. So, the water gets in, it's, it's kicked that one up out of the ground twice. One time ended up setting it on the sand.
Danny, what's your thoughts on that?
I didn't recognize you then.
If it's on the right way, and it's already installed, and it's rested out, we'll replace it. If he's wanting a new tile, and there's not one there, he purchases it, we install it.
That's what I thought about, don't you?
I suggest that you, Mr. Thacker, and, and Mr. Jones get together and meet with Mr. Bill out there sometime, and let him show you exactly what he wants.
Probably would need to, uh, our neighbor David, he could go out and look at the next thing. I mean, he, he does all this. I mean, I don't care a bit to go look at it now, but I will.
There's no problem doing what you want if it's not off the right way, which Macon has no right away, so it'd have to be in the ditch line now.
Yeah.
No drive from the road. New Salem's just got twenty foot, which has got sixteen foot driving lanes, which had to take up eight foot of your right away, so it's gotta be two, two foot from the edge of the road before we can do anything.
What is that address up there?
Six ninety-eight New Salem Road.
Six ninety-eight?
New Salem Road. Garden spot of the nation.
Is it the last house on the right before you get to the church?
Right.
Okay.
There's a tractor there, and one in the barn. Anybody that worked on it, I'll pay you for it. I've got a picture of it, it's got a new bucket on the front, five thousand dollars, three thousand on the bleed back there, it quit running.
I know a man that can fix it.
Why, I do.
I know a good Jones boy that can fix it.
Well, this Jones worked on it, but that was, which was.
Don't get him started.
That was Jones' tractor.
Mm-hmm.
I see where that's from, yeah. Yeah, can't blame him, though.
It does.
He's the best, could be. Just quit something out there.
Bill, if it's okay, we'll, we will, I'll try to look at it.
Have it.
With Danny.
Have your loss.
Or David can go out and look at it, and make a determination, I guess. We need to look at it, really. I like to look at what I.
All right, if you want to, put the creek back, Macon Road's across the road, fill that in.
But it's gotta be on road pro, road, road right away, sure.
If something were, and I guess it's the early forties, there should be records of what went on between the county and the grandmother.
Well, that might depend on.
That's history, probably a history book. But that's my part.
Yeah, okay.
And another thing, on top of the lows up there, if you want to put an antenna up there for your county use, you, you could do that. It won't cost you that, just whatever y'all will spend on.
Okay, we'll check all that out for you.
If you would, get you a tobacco stick and a food city bag.
Sir?
Get you a tobacco stick and a food city bag, stick it up on the shoulder where you want the new pipe, so we'll know exactly where, where to look.
Well, you'll see a, a milk jug laying here, and over on this side is a red thing, stick it on the post, and on this other one is a red, there's two pieces of red.
You done got me covered.
And a milk jug, yeah.
All right.
See it? Yeah, long as they know where, now that's the mouth of it.
Now, that's, that's the one.
That's what we're talking about.
The one we're talking about, the red thing there, is the new one we're talking about. That is the original one. And just don't need any red things or anything, just replace where it is and should be. Don't need anything to show where it needs to go. And aye.
We'll get it checked out for you.
There to be a thing. I wish I could go back where I said.
Good to see you, Bill.
Good to be seen. That's yours. I didn't recognize you then.
I've changed over the years. I've changed over the years.
You haven't seen nothing yet.
Okay, need a, we have the road list with all the road names on it.
You got your hand on it.
So, the only one that's been changed, Little Tam Road, it's off more of a drive, changed to Nolan Drive, that's the only one that's been changed, so, and we did it four, five hours ago, something like that. Anyway, that's all the ones that have been changed on the road list, so. We, we have to approve this year, the road list, and I guess there may be a resolution here. Mark, you get a.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. You'll have to vote, this committee will have to vote to send it on to the commission.
Yeah. So, do I hear a motion that we approve the road, uh, road name list?
I make a motion, you approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the road, road list for office count.
I'll take a zep.
Okay. Thank you. We got a motion and a second to approve the road name list for two thousand twenty-five. Any other questions or comments?
Take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All four of you, none of us, so. Road list has been approved by the committee, so. Any other business? Might pass this by you. I started calling, but it wasn't on the agenda, and normally I have other business, but on the notices that we have, that's laid in front of us for the meetings, but they're on Hickory Cove, you know, they're about. Danny, where, uh, close, our ex-sister live, uh, on the left corner of Rogers, you know where Evan Cops, the double out there? They settled lots. Well, they built a barn dominium right there, and right beside that barn dominium, there's a cemetery back there about four or five hundred feet off the road. Well, he's probably, well, he's tucking to the planning commission, so I don't know what they'll do, but he's wanting to build a road back to that cemetery, and I told him he had to meet the county's regulations specs, and then the county take it over. But I told him he'd have to have a seventy pipe, a turnaround, and that's what's required, so a school bus can make a turn without stopping, backing up, and pull them out, it's gonna be seventy-five foot. But instead of that, what he's wanting to do, and he said he would do it himself, is build a road all the way around the cemetery, so they can make the loop around the cemetery and come back at them. That'd be something probably be looking at in the future, near future. But I'm just giving you something to think about, if you're up that way, you might want to glance at it. It's still grass right now, so he's got to cut everything down, build a road, but.
He's wanting to take a few shortcuts, but that'd be up to you, I'll let him do it or not.
Yeah, well, I mean, I know he's, when he gets built, he'll, he's gonna be selling lots off that little section out there, about three, four hundred feet, but that, that's what he's gonna be asking for, I'll pass it by you, so. Any other business come before the road committee?
I got two things. Maybe if Danny wouldn't care, with the hurricane and stuff that come through, Danny, you know, a lot of the, in the road right ways, stuff like that, how is the cleanup from the hurricane? Is it, is it progressing, or is it about to cover it up, or?
We're about seventy, seventy-five percent complete.
Okay.
Okay. And over high for money, gone where it was progressing for the temporary people, so when, when the money's gone, we'll be done.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask, out, out and about, you know, in the community, especially when it snows, you hear, you hear a lot of people asking, you know, does the county take care of this road, or does? know, does the county take care of this road or does T-Dot take care of this road or is the city take care of this road, stuff like that? I just wonder if it would be possible to, uh, maybe come up with a, like a map or put it on a website where you could maybe color code a road, if it's, you know, if a county road and the county was responsible for it or, or a T-Dot road, of, you know? Lot of people ask me, you know, is this, is this a county road? Who's supposed to clean this road or mow this road or take care of this right away and stuff, so I just curious if, is that something that would be possible?
There's a very simple way to tell them without doing all that. The road's got a name, it's county maintained. If it's got a number, it's state maintained. And if it's in city limits, the city, the city it's in is responsible for it.
Okay. One more time.
If it's got a, a name and not a number?
Yeah.
It's a county maintained road.
Okay.
If it's got a number like Highway sixty-six, seventy, three forty-seven, whatever?
Yeah.
It's state maintained.
Okay.
And if it's in the city limits, the city is responsible for it.
Okay.
Justin.
The last road to find all of that we had turned over to the state was, uh, from, uh, eleven W, North Central Avenue, uh, up Carter's Valley to River Bridge. That was in nineteen eighty-eight. It's the last road we had turned over to the state. State quit taking.
That's why I was getting ready to say that will be the last.
Yeah, that's my knowledge, but, I mean, I know it is since, since then, that's the last one we were about to turn over to the state. But you're, they're mercy when you go talk to them. Is there any other business? Anybody? Move to adjourn?
I make a move with adjourn.
Second.
Set.
I thought anybody won't leave her for me. Okay, I appreciate you.
Does Donna have this list electronic? Should we get it over to Nancy Davis?
She's already got fourteen.
Okay, okay, great.
And I had to make myself ten more, 'cause I figured Nancy...
Can we just vote on that and run that really quick?
Oh, sorry.
So, okay.
Move to adjourn?
Above.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Sure, I'll carry it.